Go ahead.
Welcome to the November 30th, 2022 special meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment on those topics for which a public hearing has not been held. My name is Eric Casino. I'm the season's chair and I reside in District Two. We'll start introductions of the planning commissioners here in the boardroom and then move on to Zoom. So we'll start down here with Commissioner Simmons, Gibson, District Three.
One.
Ellen Wheatley, District One.
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
And I believe we have Commissioner Halverson.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
And Commissioner Pestinger.
Kevin Pestinger, District One.
And then I think we will, we do have our friends from the Olympia Planning Commission tonight here for a public hearing, but we'll do our introductions with them this evening or right now if we can. So I'm not sure how you guys would like to introduce yourselves, but.
I can call them off and ask them to.
And Mr. DeFogus will call you off.
Right, Commissioner Adams.
President.
Commissioner Miller.
Is that, this is Candy. I'm present, present.
Commissioner Cleveland.
Here.
Commissioner Richmond.
Here.
And my Chair Carlos.
Here.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the Thurston County Planning Commission. Has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? I'd like to make one amendment to it and have a small discussion about the procedures of our hearing. And if so, I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'd call for the vote.
Sorry, um, so go ahead and start online or do you want to start in the room?
Start in the room and then we'll ask for Commissioner Halverson and Cuttersen.
Okay.
Pestinger, I'm sorry.
Okay, so Commissioner Simmons. Hi. Commissioner Day. Hi. Commissioner Wheatley.
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson. Hi. Commissioner Carmen. Hi. Chair Casino. Hi. Commissioner Pestinger.
Hi.
Commissioner Halverson, are you okay with the agenda?
Hi.
Thank you. The agenda's accepted unanimously. Okay, with that, has everybody had a chance to look over our meeting minutes from our October 26th special meeting that we did with the Olympia Planning Commission prior? And if so, entertain a motion.
No approval of the meeting minutes and accept the audio official record.
Second, a call for the vote. Commissioner Simmons. Or Commissioner Day. Hi. Commissioner Wheatley. Hi. Commissioner Nelson. Hi. Commissioner Carmen. Hi. Chair Casino. Hi. Commissioner Pestinger.
I'm standing.
Commissioner Halverson.
Hi.
That motion carries so the, you approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official record of the October 26th, 22 special meeting. Right with that, we're going to have a discussion now about the procedures for this evening. And I'm hoping that Maya is on, is online.
Excuse me, there are a couple of hands raised. Some of the attendees.
Uh.
Aaron and Joyce.
Commissioner Saueroff and Joyce Phillips, City of Olympia.
This goes into the question of procedure that we were having on whose meeting this is and meeting direction from Maya on the particular issue. Yeah, we'll get to the Olympia Planning Commission questions in just a minute. We have a procedural issue that we want to square away with Planner Maya Tople first if we can. And the, the question basically concern on this part of our meeting, the special meeting, that is the Thurston County's Planning Commission special meeting is prior to our public hearing. And as such, how much is the Olympia Planning Commission supposed to be engaged in our meeting? Are, is there? And then after our public hearing, are they going to work with us in our work session? Or be part of the deliberations or the recommendations if one comes out? Mike, could you address those for us, please?
Yes, so county-wide planning policies and comprehensive plan policies state that both planning commissions review future land use and planning documents for the joint planning area. So this is a joint effort because the planning document is in the shared area of the City of Olympia and Thurston County, even though Thurston County is, you know, doing the permits in that area. So for Tom Water, we had both planning commissions make a recommendation. In that case, they were two different recommendations, but they were separate. So each planning commission made their own recommendation. I would suggest the same process for tonight. If there is follow-up needed after this work session and deliberations on adjustments to the joint plan, then I would like to see both planning commissions come together for those conversations. If we're not in agreement, then Lee and I will take forward a planning commission, Thurston County Planning Commission recommended draft. And then we will highlight areas where the City of Olympia Planning Commission may have differing opinions. And that was the process that we did for Tom Water. There were a few areas where they were not in agreement. We highlighted those and communicated those to the Board of County Commissioners. And ultimately, the county commissioners will make the final decision on the document.
If the Thurston County Planning Commission decides to take a vote on a recommendation, do we also ask for the Olympia Planning Commission's vote at the same time?
Uh, we had, we did not do that for Tom Water. So we only took the Thurston County Planning Commissioners' vote for the Thurston County Planning Commission recommendation. And then the City of Tom Water Planning Commission made their own motion and recommendation. So I would recommend the same process for this, that Thurston County Planning Commissioners address their motion and then the city have their own motion. Carrie, you're nodding your head a little bit. Does that sound okay for procedure with your planning commission?
Um, yes, and both Joyce and I were curious as well as to the process moving forward.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wheatley.
Would that be during this meeting though? Or is there, would the Olympia Planning Commission need to go back to its next meeting?
No, it would be during this meeting. And if both planning commissions are prepared for that, if not, then we would need to hold another joint work session following this meeting, so.
Well, it's a proper, as there for meeting. It sounds like a issue, not a, right, yeah. Okay, does anybody else have any questions concerning about the procedures on how we should move forward with our hearing tonight? I think I, I think I understand. Now we'll move back to our friends on Zoom that had some questions if those weren't answered yet. I can't see who has their hand up, though.
Yeah, hey, it's not really questioning everyone. Wanted to make sure I was, it was reflected in the minutes that I'm also here. My name was Commissioner Aaron, here in the area of Olympia.
Oh, thank you very much. Sorry for, for missing you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody, anybody else online that had a question before we move forward?
I was only going to make the same comment, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, with that, I guess, I guess we're to the public communication portion of the special meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. And as such, we would take any public comments, but I don't think that we have a single person here to address us for.
No hands are up.
We have, and nobody in the, nobody in the boardroom and nobody, is there anybody online that would like to address the Thurston County Planning Commission on matters that we have not had a public hearing on and on something other than the Olympia Joint Plan Public Hearing we are about to have? All right, well, that concludes our portion of the opportunity for the public to address the planning commission. With that, we don't have any thing else on our agenda. We still have a few minutes, but I guess one of the things that we could do is if there are any staff updates that maybe we can talk about for a couple of minutes before we start a public hearing.
I don't have any staff updates.
You don't have any staff updates?
Other than to say that we've moved to the atrium is underway and staff, our staff are expected to be in that building as of the end of next week.
All right.
And we're meeting next week.
I think that's still here. I think that's still here. The Board of County Commissioners is still meeting here.
And that's the last meeting of the year.
I believe so.
We've got to set something special up for you.
Well, with three and a half minutes left, is there anything here for the good of the order? All right, well, we will, we will wait until our seven o'clock time to start our public hearing. And in the meantime, this will take a little break for a couple of minutes. Today, we are here to hold a joint public hearing on the Comprehensive Plan Docket Item CPA One, Olympia Joint Plan. The Planning Commission for Thurston County and the City of Olympia are present. This hearing is now open. We will start with a presentation from staff and then call for public testimony. Miss Stacey, she'll start us off, please.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Leah Davis, Planner with Thurston County Community Planning. I'm joined online by Maya Tople, Senior Planner from Thurston County, Carrie Hornbine, Senior Planner, City of Olympia, and Joyce Phillips, Principal Planner, City of Olympia. So I'm going to give a brief review of where we are today and some of the steps that we've taken to get here. So today's agenda, we will cover again the purpose of the joint plan, the amendments that we've made through this joint planning commission process, an overview of the urban growth areas. We'll talk briefly about the mapping corrections that are included in this update. And we will talk about the options for Glenmore Village, and then we will hold a public hearing. So this joint plan reflects not only the current conditions of the Olympia urban growth area, but it also reflects the comprehensive plans for Thurston County and the City of Olympia. It is the basis for future planning decisions by Thurston County and the City of Olympia. And it helps guide development in the urban growth area as we transition from rural to urban level development. It provides the framework for development regulations, also known as Thurston County Code Title 23. And it assembles goals and policies from all Thurston County departments. And I want to remind you that all Thurston County departments reviewed their respective chapters and approved of all the goals and policies included in this draft. So far, this joint planning commission has held two work sessions, both of them last month. One request was made by the commissioners that we include information to help protect agriculture in the urban growth area. So we included specifically a policy, a goal and some policies for the transfer of development rights and the purchase of development rights. We also included a narrative of the vision of the urban growth areas. We will go into those a little bit later in this presentation. And we've updated the economic and housing background to include the recent spike in housing costs for both renters and home buyers and the shortage of affordable housing. So this is a map of Olympia and its urban growth area. The urban growth area are the white areas. It is approximately 3,900 acres and is predominantly residential zoning. I've divided it into three separate sections, the northeast, the southeast, and the west, to take a closer look at. So first, the northeast section, it is entirely made up of residential zoning. In the center, we have the light yellow, which is low-density residential. The gold, dark gold is kind of a medium-density residential. And the yellow areas on the south are a high-density residential. And going down to the southeast urban growth area, and just as a point of reference, that big pink triangle near the center is the Glenmore Village Development. It's along Rich Road and Yell Highway. And you can see on this map that it is predominantly residential and predominantly low to medium residential. But the orange, yellow, and peach areas are a little more high-density residential. There's also one small area down by the railroad tracks on, near Rich Road, that is light industrial commercial, and then some little pink spots along Yell Highway, which are neighborhood retail. And over to the west urban growth area, it's a much smaller urban growth area section. And the, most of it is on the north end of the city limits of Cooper Point Road. It is low-density residential. Then there are some sections over on the west edge of the city limits. They're mostly residential, but there's also a neighborhood village to serve some neighborhoods and one area of light industrial, light industrial commercial along 101. Want to review the mapping corrections that we've touched on in the other meetings. Every time there's a comp plan update, and this is a comp plan update, GeoData contact staff and says, we have some mapping errors we would like to include in this update. And so we found seven areas in the Olympia growth area where zoning boundaries didn't even match up with parcel boundaries or other things like that. So it may make some small changes in the acreage of the future land use map, but we don't need any decisions. It's just going to be included in this update. So let's get on to the Glenmore Village options. The red section of this map is the 8.83 acre parcel that the landowner applied for a zoning and land use change. That, that proposal was not supported by the City of Olympia because it didn't meet the intent of that zoning, which was to support having businesses in that area that support the surrounding neighborhoods. The pink area to the south of there is the Glenmore Village residential development that is almost completely built out. So the applicant requested a change from community-oriented shopping center to professional office multifamily residential. And since we didn't really support that, we decided to get together the City of Olympia and Thurston County and come up with a better solution that might be workable for the applicant. And what we came up with was a text code amendment that eliminated the requirement for a grocery store on that parcel. That seemed to be a bit of an obstacle for development. So we have provided amendment here of Title 23, Chapter 23.05, where the standards for the community-oriented shopping center grocery store changes from a required use to a permitted use. And as you might recall, at our last joint work session, the applicant was here and supported that, that compromise. And also his proponent testified and wrote a letter supporting that. I want to assure you that we've done all duly notice for this public hearing we're about to hold. The website was updated with all information about the public hearing and all the materials that were given to the commissioners. A legal notice was published in the Olympian. A web mailer was sent to all interested parties. An email was sent to Glenmore Village residents that participated in the, the open house in September, and a press release was issued. And as of four o'clock today, we received three comments from the public. Those were sent to you late this afternoon, probably close to five o'clock. There was a matrix with a summary, and then all of the comments were attached to that. And so now I suggest we hold a public hearing.
Well, I actually already opened the public hearing.
Okay.
So we'll move on to the, to the public testimony portion of our public hearing. And with that, we don't have anybody in the boardroom. Do we have people on? Okay, good. I'll, I'll run through this. We will now take public testimony. This is a hybrid public meeting. Those wishing to testify have appeared in person or have joined by Zoom, phone, emailed in comment or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify for those in person, please sign in. For those on Zoom, please choose the raise your hand option. If you are dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. I will call your name and unmute you when it's your turn to speak. Make sure you also choose star six to unmute yourself. If you have issues speaking or being heard, please disconnect from the Zoom meeting and call 360-972-6785. We have some rules for public testimony. Each person will have three minutes to testify. I will be calling out names for oral testimony. When you hear your name, please come forward to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When testifying, please provide your name and address for the record. And we will try to limit you to three minutes with a timer that Ms. Stoker will explain.
Um, you'll have three minutes, and for two minutes and 30 seconds, it will be green. And at that point, turn yellow for 30 seconds. And when it hits red, that means you have to give it.
She's muted. I don't know whether he went through to everybody else, chose it for me.
The board. Okay. Okay, with that, we don't have anybody in the boardroom that would like to testify. So we'll move to our online attendees and I'm not sure. Loretta, you'll be up first, please.
Hello, this is Loretta Sepinen, and I'm from Olympia, Washington. I want to urge the two planning commissions to ask the staff for more work before you approve this joint plan. My key issue is about housing. Your staff has updated the housing part of the draft plan to now include data from the Buildable Lands Report. And that's good. That report is designed for use in this kind of work. Unfortunately, your staff provided you with combined city and UGA data. What you need is data for the UGA all by itself. I looked at that data. First, know that there are now 5,100 units of housing in those combined Olympia UGAs. Then know that there's room for another 1,680 units if every usable or vacant building slot is built. The Buildable Lands Report forecasts out to 2040, and it says that 1,200 units are needed. That means that if you build everything, there'll be a little space left. There'll be about 400 to 500 units that still can be squeezed in. There's a separate set of numbers for the city itself, and that's nine times as big because there's more space and there's more density. Then I looked at this summer, the TRCP updated the population forecast. It goes now to 2045. By my extrapolation, because of course they haven't redone the Buildable Lands Report yet, by my extrapolation, it calls for another 500 to 600 units in those five years. I said there was space with current zoning for, to squeeze in 400 to 500, but there's a need for 500 to 600. So what we have here is, is there enough space for everybody? Yes, barely in 2040, probably not in 2045. So you need rezoning. My first recommendation is that you add a policy goal to rezone where possible to higher UGA density and to do it by 2030. The second issue is that 123 acres of that buildable UGA land is now being farmed. It's farmland. Since we know we need every bit, every single bit of the buildable land, we already know those farms will be gone. My second recommendation is that the city and the county quickly create a farmland loss mitigation program in addition to what you've already got in your, in your document. And that means the city would conserve rural farmland to replace the lost UGA farm. Thank you for considering these recommendations.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Tom Schrader.
Can you hear me?
You can, thank you.
Okay, thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak. So I'm the owner of the 8.83 acres on the corner of Yell Highway and Rich Road. And so the, the idea for me right now is to remove the grocery store component from the COSC zoning on that property. And the reason being is, is because if, if you know that area, within two miles, there's a QFC Safeway and Walmart that already exists. There's a reason why the Briggs Village area, which is down the street, less than a mile and a half away on Henderson and Yell Highway over by the Briggs Nursery. There's a reason that that grocery store, which was set aside in the original plat, now has become smaller and smaller and smaller, has never been developed, is, is because there are too many grocery stores there. And if you draw, draw the camera back a little bit to a six-mile radius, you have three others mega stores, Costco, Walmart, Fred Meyer in Tom Water, Trossper Road area. So the idea of a grocery store of the magnitude that is part of the Glenmore Village master plan ever going on this site, nobody would ever do that. And the community really doesn't want that. As far as the options go, the PORM rezone option actually has residential as part of that rezone componentry. The COSC, Community Oriented Shopping Center, is more commercial slanted than the PORM. My request is it's for the PORM zoning. So if someone wanted more residential in the Glenmore Village plat, then they would probably select the PORM rezone option over above just it staying the COSC. My main intent there is to stay with the cohesive nature, and that is community slash residential. And so that's why the PORM was selected. I had several conversations with the City of Olympia, which has the same COSC zoning and with the county. And I selected the PORM zoning for that reason, because it slants more to residential multifamily. The idea that the Glenmore Village plat, the plat that's in place right now, has the ability to go more residential in that area is, is not correct because of the 14 acres, which was the original acres, all the residential has almost been built out. You can drive by that today. The 8.83 acres was meant to be commercial and open space, open space in the context of a park and walking trails. And I would keep the parking on walking trails as the original plat had planned. And I'd also be a proponent for the Glenmore Village cul-de-sac that's existing right there, that if that popped through to Rich Road, that traffic would be limited to only residences in that area or emergency vehicles exiting there and not through traffic. And that is for either plan, either the PORM selection plan or the not PORM selection plan. I would be a huge proponent for that staying as residence-only access. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else online that would like to address the planning commissions? Somebody else online, I'm going to entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded to close this public hearing. Call for the vote. It's been moved and seconded to close this public hearing. Call for the vote. Okay, I'll start here. Mr. Sines, our Mr. Day.
Hi.
Mr. Wheatley.
Hi.
Mr. Nelson.
Hi.
Vice Chair Carmen.
Hi.
Chair Casino. Hi, Commissioner Hopperson.
Hi.
Mr. Adams.
Hi.
Mr. Miller.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, sorry.
Vice Chair Carlos.
Hi.
Did everybody? All right, this public hearing is now closed. Planning Commissions will now continue with the work session considering any motions. So please do start.
It's really quick.
We received. A comment from the open house stating that they didn't want more traffic through Glenmore Village. They were concerned about that parcel being developed and having cars going through Glenmore Village. The second comment was a number of things. They were concerned about the population. The growing population of schools. They were concerned about stormwater issues. A number of things that. Nothing real related to policy specifically, just concerns. And then the third one was from someone that testified tonight, and she basically said the same thing Loretta Sepinen talked about. Not having enough land in the UGAs to get to two thousand forty-five in her calculations. Those were the three.
Scott, do you have anything?
Sure. Great. So I have.
Hold on, Commissioner Pessinger, we got Commissioner Nelson up first.
There's several places in this document that reference the city of Olympia, even downtown. And this is a UGA plan. So I think we need to go through it as much as we can, make this an urban growth target plan not. I mean, I know it's the city's plan on them. I think I've cleared my issues with that, but. I think we're referencing like. Somewhere in here, I've got the pages marked. I don't know if I can find it real quick, but somewhere in here, and actually. There's a whole section on downtown. I don't think that's an appropriate thing to have in Thurston County comprehensively. Yeah, like on page eighty-one, downtown and other neighborhoods, downtown Olympia.
What is it referring specifically? What's the context?
Says, our community is composed of many neighborhoods, some like downtown are composed of commercial. Cultural and residential activities and land. Other neighborhoods are primary residential, parks and schools. The section of plan. Addresses these various places together, formal IP and urban growth area.
So it's describing the city. And the amenities in the city.
I mean, that's basically what it was down to. This is Olympia's plan. That's a look at city plan. Changed a few things around to try and say that it's. The UGA, but it's Olympia's plan. And so I'm going to add to that. There is no. I mean, there's almost, there's still almost nothing about natural resources other than. Parks and air and, you know, more open space issues.
So what would you like to see, Commissioner Nelson?
Well, I'd like to see. Thurston County do a joint plan. And I don't think that's what this is.
Yeah.
I think this is a city of Olympia plan. And that takes me to the third concern. That when the city of Olympia does their joint planning, I don't think people that lived in the UGAs. Went to those joint plans meetings and said, this is what I want in my area. And so we're taking. What the city of Olympia wants to do and just transferring it out here. And we're really not giving the people who live in the. Urban growth areas a real voice. Because there's been, I mean, this is a. This is a whole process that went into this with community meetings. Going through staff and drafts and everything. I think that probably, and I mean, let's be honest, I've been doing this for a long time. There's. There's a lot of people that don't do that anyways. But I think there are people that might be interested. That probably didn't even know that this was going on. You know, didn't didn't think it affected them because they thought, well, I live in Thurston County. Not in Sydney, Brooklyn.
So what would you like to see specifically?
I think that. There's too much to go through and for us right now, I have I have to go through. Unfortunately, I didn't mark all the pages and I've marked all the comments I had, but things like. You know, there's a part about urban corridors and it's all. Streets that are, it's all streets and neighborhoods in the city.
Yeah, we did review all of those. And if those corridors extended into the urban growth area, we left them. If they didn't touch the urban growth area, we removed all of those sections. So some of those roads are very long, those corridors, they're called corridors. They do extend into the urban growth area and the people in the urban growth area use those corridors a lot. And so that's the reason that we left those.
People that don't live in the city or those urban growth areas use those areas a lot. But it's still, I mean, if you're talking about. You know, I know one of them was Lily Road. You know, yes, there's some, I think there's some UGA at the end of that. But when you're talking about Martin Way, Lily Road, you know, this area like this. And then you say, oh, well, we just, because Lily Road goes out into the UGA, we just left it there. But I don't think that once you get out of the city. I think when you look at zoning, I think that corridor is more specific to the city than all of that area. And I think like, there was a, there's a reference to. The Cooper Point, Harrison Avenue, Black Lake Boulevard area. That's pretty much not, that's not urban growth area.
Well, there is a growth area on all of those streets. I mean, the Cooper Point road goes right up through the urban growth area. I mean, we really did remove things that weren't relevant. We went through the whole plan and we spent a long time doing that. But if you have something specific you'd like to see, you want to take sections out?
Yeah, Harrison Avenue from Cooper Point Road overhauls from. You know, the West Side Transportation Issues, US one one west to Olympia Access. Pacific and Lily. Northeast Transportation Issues, Lily. You know, Boulevard Road corridor, obviously that extends out towards the UGA, but I don't think it actually leaves the city. I mean, yeah, I can't eat, but I mean, I don't. And I think that one's, I mean, because that one's specific to an entire road. It does go straight to. At least goes to the edge of the city, but I think it goes to. But, I mean.
Is the is the biggest concern here that this is bloated with stuff that is outside of the UGA?
Yeah, I mean, that, this is got a lot of city stuff in it. And in my opinion, city stuff does not belong in the Thurston County.
It is a combination of the city of Olympia and Thurston County compliance. It reflects both of them. And we both adopted as part of our compliance. So it has to reflect both. And it will eventually become, the UGA will eventually become a part of the city. And that's the thinking and, you know, working toward that.
May become.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
This is the argument I made at Tumwater. Who knows when?
Right.
You know, I mean, that's what my biggest issue, you know, if you go back to Tumwater, my biggest issue is the agriculture stuff. And adopting Tumwater's rules for agriculture when, A, that land. May not ever go into the city of Tumwater, B, it's probably going to be ten, twenty, thirty years before it does. So that's, and that's where my issue is, is we're putting these rules on. And, I mean, you can, you can ask people out there, because I know in two thousand. Maybe five, we shrunk the UGAs a lot. We got rid of all our flammers. I mean. Just because you're in the UGA today does not mean you're going to be put in the city in the very near future.
Right.
So. I mean, that's, I mean, that's kind of a different thing than what I'm talking about here, but.
Yeah, and these aren't rules. These aren't regulations. Oh, this is, this is just a vision for the future. It's it's not regulatory.
But see, that goes back to my problem. This is the city of Olympia's vision. This is the citizen, the city of Olympia and the citizens of the city of Olympia's vision. I don't know, I don't have any reason to believe that this is a. Thurston County arrest. That's who I'm in the UGA vision.
I, you brought this up at the last work session. Joyce Phillips, who's been at the city of Olympia for a long time. Did say that a lot of people from the UGA participated in those planning, public engagement. Events. I wasn't here at that time, but.
Commissioner Pessinger, I'm going to move to you. Did you have something?
My question was answered. Thank you.
Great, Commissioner Wheatley.
I will defer to Commissioner Day because he was.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, I think I think Scott has some really interesting points about, I think engagement was the one that really speaks to me. Hearing that that may have been answered before is helpful. I didn't go through this time. But I will say that, you know, I I work in a field where it's really common to see. Like if you have areas that later get annexed and there weren't consistent regulations, like stormwater is a perfect example. Where jurisdictions will annex something and it will have vastly different stormwater requirements. Between cities and counties and that creates a whole huge mess in the future. So I think there there are very clear reasons. We should be doing these joint planning. And honestly. It being the city's vision is probably appropriate, but you're a hundred percent right that we should be making sure that the people who are in those areas. Are being heard during that process. But I think it's actually appropriate to be more of the city's vision because the city is going to have responsibility. In theory, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to come at it from a slightly different direction. But I think, you know, my. My way of saying what I think is similar to what Commissioner Nelson is saying is that. The UGA conceptually in the growth manager, in the, well, in the WAC on UGAs at least. What I've been reading really closely. A UGA. That's unincorporated city. Is conceptually different to the incorporated part of the city. And. Because we are the Thurston County Planning Commission, I think we're looking at it. From the point of view of the protection of the boundary between rural. And urban. And I think that the perspective that's presented by this plan. Is coming from the urban and projecting outward. So I think that's why the, you know, say the Olympia Planning Commission. And the Thurston County Planning Commission might very well come down on different sides of this proposed plan because. I think we're concerned about the rural edge of this, I think, more. And and I spent a little time looking at. What other jurisdictions do. And I found particularly interesting the approach of. Well, it's basically Bellingham, Watkin County. They treat the UGA, and by that I mean the UGA is defined by the Buildable Lands Report. And this is where we got tangled up last time is that in the Buildable Lands Report, they specifically state. That when they're talking about UGA, they're talking about the unincorporated areas. And part of the confusion, I think, with this plan is there's not clarity. About when UGA means the whole urban area and when UGA means the unincorporated areas. So I think there should be consistency in language. And when I'm talking about UGA, I'm talking about unincorporated Olympia. And what Watkin County does is they have something that they call the Urban Fringe Subarea Plan. So they take that unincorporated. Area, the the UGA, and they have a plan for it as the unincorporated part of the city. That's different to the incorporated part of the city. King County does a similar thing in a slightly different way. Where their goal is to kind of create, they they have a green space, open space plan. Where they kind of draw a circle around a boundary line within that unincorporated area. So that again, you have this buffer zone or this transitional zone between the urban and the rural. I think the assumption that this plan and the way that it's written is that. Someday, this part's going to become just as urban as, you know, downtown Olympia or, you know, or incorporated Olympia is now. And I think part of what I hear Commissioner Nelson saying, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but. That's not necessarily the way that people who live in the unincorporated area feel about it or what they anticipate. Because it's not necessarily the same thing. And if you look at the WAC on urban growth areas. It talks about a lot of criteria for how the city expands and how it's supposed to have a plan of staged. Expansion and growth. And and that's what this joint plan should be. Is it should be talking more specifically about what are those states? Is it should be talking more specifically about what are those stages? And what a lot of jurisdictions seem to do in that regard is they will take, you know, like, I appreciate how the latest memorandum, it kind of broke it out and we got the narratives about the different focus areas, as they were called in the memorandum. And the character of each of those focus areas is quite different. The challenges are quite different. And it would perhaps be sensible to think about doing sub-area plans for each of those. That's what some jurisdictions do. So there are ways of thinking about how these UGAs work, how they operate as that zone between Thurston County and Incorporated Olympia that are not really drawn out in this in this proposed joint plan. I have some real specific thoughts about that, but that's my kind of ten thousand foot view of what I think is problematic about this joint plan. So I'll stop there in case anybody else has comments.
Do you want to add more to that, Scott? Jim, Derek, do you have more?
Actually, I do want to say, to address Commissioner Day's concern, we have had changes to our code also in the past to make it so that it's, that our, once you're in the UGA, you're getting developed. We're trying to make it more, so we don't have like these different street regulations and lot sizes. So we have changed things in Thurston County code for the UGA so that they were more, so it'll be more, more, I guess you could say seamless transition, once they do get incorporated.
Right. So that it's more predictable for the people who live there, right?
Well, I guess, I guess my question is, what, what I, I read through there, you know, what I've read is, these are visions and goals.
Goals and policies.
Goals and policies, okay, but it seems like I have a vision, yes, that kind of in there. So how, like, this stack of papers that we got? It's not, you mentioned it's not regulation.
Correct.
So I, I do agree with, with Scott. It seems like this is kind of a city thing, but it's just I guess, I, I feel like we're getting wrapped around the axle here about something that's not, I, I don't know how to say it, but it's just not, you know, is this, it's what we're hoping for, what the city is hoping for, and maybe we can kind of come into alignment with what our thoughts are too. But are we just getting too kind of in the woods right now or too deep in the ditch for what this is supposed to be doing? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. What is the goal of this document?
It's a framework to make future decisions about planning for the city and the county. And it also is a framework for development regulations. As the areas become more dense, the development regulations, and as they're annexed or getting closer to annexation, the development regulations will be based on the things in this joint plan.
Okay, so, so in ten years from now, this may be just out the window. There might be some different old regulations altogether.
Well, we, we do need to update the joint plans more regularly than we have in the past. It's been over twenty years since this was updated, and that's not acceptable. But we haven't had staffing, so now we're hoping to stay on a better timetable. And it will be updated and changed as, as things grow. The urban growth boundaries could change. What gets annexed in the city could change, and we will progress on the way out. I mean, it's, we've got the core of the city. We've got, you know, less developed area, we've got the urban growth area that is pretty low density development. But as the population increases, we have to keep moving outward and never mind. And, and I think this does that. I think it is a staged growth, because as I pointed out on all of those maps, it's pretty low density residential development out there in the UGA. Some of it is medium. And in some areas along corridors, it is a higher density because there are businesses there. So I, I think that you're looking at it correctly. Yeah.
Good, Commissioner, we leave.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to sort of maybe comment on the question. I think, you know, when I looked at it as a docket item, you know, and, and when I think about what our job is, is the planning commission, you know, we're looking for consistency, right? I mean, that's sort of our charge, is to make sure it's consistent with, you know, from our perspective with Thurston, especially, you know, we're not, it's not our job to know if it's consistent with what the City of Olympia stuff is. But it's our job to know if it's consistent with what the county stuff is. Like Sustainable Thurston, like the county, the County Comprehensive Plan, like the Thurston County Adaptive, the Climate Adaptation Plan, the Thurston County Climate Mitigation Plan. You know, there are, there's a lot of planning besides just accommodating growth. And I'm really tuned into that because I know from attending the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management stuff that, and looking at sort of the legislative agendas there that are going on. There's a lot more emphasis now within the Growth Management Act and with recent legislation and especially legislation that's coming down the pike here this year and onwards. There's a lot more emphasis on looking at change over time and making sure that things actually work in the real world. And and so what that means for us is that we need to be really tuned into what that, looking at these specific focus areas of the of the GMAs that are all very different, you've got the South, the West, and the North, and they all have kind of different issues. How are those other elements besides just accommodating population growth and dwelling units going to play in here? And there are some real issues. For example, the, the one that really strikes me the hardest is these difficult to sewer areas in the north focus area. I don't understand how they're staying in the plan, in the, in the, within the boundaries. And I take to heart Florida's seven and's call to really think about whether the urban growth boundaries are actually appropriate. Because if you look at the difficult sewer areas, it's much of that, you know, I have a map of it. It's much of that northern part of the UGA. And if the, going back to your point, if the city is not planning to extend sewer to those places, it has no business being within the UGA. Because part of the reason why there's this joint plan, as you said, is because it's the City of Olympia that's going to be providing the services, right? You need, need the consistency with what the city does in terms of its infrastructure. But it's already said, well, we can't deliver sewer there. So what is it, why didn't we take this opportunity during this revision to ask the question, well, if the City of Olympia is not planning to deliver one of the fundamental services that is part of the UGA, you know, the, the WAC actually says you should consider taking that out. The Buildable Lands Report itself says you should consider taking that out. It's right there in the Buildable Lands Report. It's a recommendation to consider whether that part of the UGA should remain within the UGA. So why are we, you know, that's the, that's the problem. Why are we not looking at that now? Because that is, and the reason I say that is because that area is going to be very heavily impacted probably by the Martin Way Corridor Development Project.
It's, as I said before, this is not the mechanism to change the urban growth area. That's a whole separate process, legal process and separate, separate thing. So what we're looking at is what we have in front of us, and that's the urban growth area as we, as we see it today.
But, but if this is visions and plans, we shouldn't be doing that. We should be visioning if, you know, what the, and it's not even the future at this point. I mean, the, the Martin Way Corridor project's moving along.
What project is that?
Well, the, 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 the transportation project at the City of Olympia, you know, folks from the City of Olympia could probably explain it better than me, but the, the project to to, that's joint with Lacy to basically kind of redo the, the Martin Way.
That's a study.
Well, it's a study, correct. It's one that we are sort of obligated to be aware of because it directly impacts, you know, what's, what's going to happen there.
There's a lot of really great high level stuff here that has been brought up as a concern. And I, I almost feel bad going into the nuts and bolts on a couple of these issues. But when I was looking at this attachment D about some of the permitted special requirements, prohibited uses, some of the things that are in here, like mobile homes, is there anywhere else in the county that we do not allow mobile homes? Do the other, do we allow mobile homes in the other UGAs? I know we obviously allow them in incorporated county. But does the Tom Water or the Lacy?
Well, we asked for that underground now and it does.
Yeah, we, yes. And I have no disanswer, but I want the question anyways. Would the Olympia UGA be the only place that the county did not allow mobile home?
I have to say, I don't know what.
Well, it says mobile homes are prohibited except as emergency housing.
Attachment, what?
Attachment D, so this would be twenty-three oh five oh four oh, prohibited special required and prohibited uses.
Oh.
B two or B three, mobile homes.
Right.
Especially, I mean, mobile homes are, you know, lots of people don't really like them, but they are affordable housing, more affordable housing. And we allow them in lots and lots of areas in the county, everywhere in the county, other than the Olympia UGA. I think that's a little bit problematic, especially, it goes back to Scott's point, that this is Olympia dictating to the county how things are going to be.
Twenty-three point oh five is community oriented shopping center zoning district, and that is probably why they're not allowed there. I, that's the attachment is twenty-three.
This is for neighborhood center, neighborhood village, urban village.
Right, and that's, those are retail areas to support neighborhoods and different zoning things. So it's, it's retail. It's not a housing.
It's not a housing issue.
Right, it's a, it's a retail. Those are just little commercial areas to support.
And we also and the, the other prohibitions here are habitation vehicles, which makes sense. Are there other areas in the county that we would prohibit the sale of firearms for pawn shops or automobile oriented uses which primarily cater to customers and their vehicles?
Yes, in the UGA's, there are those areas and have longstanding.
Longstanding.
Longstanding, yes. And I think as far as housing goes, nowhere can you discriminate against mobile homes or manufactured homes. I believe they're allowed anywhere, except if you have high density, you can't stack up mobile homes. So maybe in some very high density areas, but as far as housing types.
In this zoning that we were just talking about, this, this community oriented shopping center, possibly, you would allow stick built housing, but not mobile home housing.
Not on this parcel that we're under, that is under consideration.
I'm not talking specifically about Glummore Village. I'm, I'm talking specifically about this attachment D, which is twenty-three oh.
Oh, I see. So the residential portion of that development.
The, well, anywhere within twenty-three oh five, you would allow stick built, but not mobiles.
I can't answer that right off the top of my head. I have to read the code and I don't write all. It's a big section of code.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
I can, I'll defer. Yeah, this is a, oh, I'm sorry. This is on a slightly different topic if, if we kind of feel satisfied with that one. And, and that's kind of going a little bit to Loretta's point about, you know, what's enough land and what does this mean for farmland? And, and I absolutely agree with her that there has to be more considerate, there are a lot of things I would have to say possibly about the farmland issue, but, but I actually want to raise a question about this, you know, included in our pack, it was the SEPA checklist. And first of all, was that SEPA checklist, is it kind of based off the one that was done back in twenty, you know, the years ago that I mean, there are some additions to, there are some comments for a non, what do you call it, a non?
Determination and non.
No, no, a non-project.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and there's some narrative about that. But I'm wondering, you know, she pointed out, and I, I look, you know, I'm very familiar with the Buildable Lands Report two. And she pointed out in this evening's comments that the number of dwelling units in the UGA are going to increase, they're anticipated to increase from four thousand nine hundred and seventy in twenty twenty to six thousand two hundred and ninety by twenty forty-five, which is a thirty-six percent increase. I calculated, I don't know if I calculated that right or not, but, yeah, gross by a third. And I'm not sure what that means in terms of that, you know, I think the unincorporated is like a quarter of the total UGA or something like that. But anyway. So you have this, this definite increase in say, you know, impermeable surfaces and things like that. And you also have in the Buildable Lands Report Appendix two a picture provided of where that building is going to happen. It's mostly going to be in the south side and then the north side, then the southwest and northwest. So so you've got some fairly good information there that's fairly solid about the impacts in the UGA and where, where those impacts are going to be in terms of residential building. I'm not sure, and, you know, I'd like maybe some discussion about this, but in the SEPA checklist, I saw a lot of N slash A, you know, not applicable. And I'm wondering if, if others agree that some of those questions that are asked in the SEPA checklist are, are not applicable. I think if you have that much building by twenty forty-five, you should be talking about the cumulative impact. So that's one, you know, one question that's sort of related to the SEPA check checklist. Kind of along similar lines, I'm kind of wondering whether there was outreach to say the state about RIA thirteen issues or tribes, because there are streams involved. And for example, working at Chambers, the Chambers Creek part, you know, that's south of the, that's in the south thing, it's south of the railway. And it had me wondering again, are we sure this should even be in the UGA? Because it's it's it looks like it's, there are questions that I have about the zoning, you know, like when you're thinking about environmental impacts, it's going to make a difference how dense that's zoned. And I'm wondering if the zoning density is, is correct. But it's hard to know that if you don't do sort of an environmental impact assessment. So, so, you know, sort of the zoning is connected to the environmental impacts. And I'm just wondering if other people feel like maybe there should have been more questions answered in the checklist rather than just accepting that it says not applicable for some of these things. Because it seems like.
He shared, he shares the same concern.
I'll just leave it there.
Commissioner Pessinger, do you have more on that?
So I've just seen a long history of amazingly huge projects listed with EPA and other environmental impacts that's not applicable or determination and non-significance and. And I, I don't follow, I don't understand why that's remotely accurate.
Well, it is a non-project action. No development has been proposed. So just talking about visions and goals and policies does not have an impact. We're not changing any of the boundaries of the urban growth area. We're not changing any of the zoning of the urban growth area, except for the one proposal that probably won't go at the, at the Glenmore Village. So nothing's changing in that respect, which is why there's no increased, um, impacts over the last SEPA project or the SEPA that was done. I think it was the nineties. Not, nothing on the ground has changed, except for incremental residential development that's happening pretty slowly at this point. I would, that's my answer for that.
So.
There, there are no big projects proposed.
So the SEPA really only applies to the, essentially the repeal and replace action? And that doesn't have, there aren't significant differences? There are substantive differences with those. And the actual development that was done as, you know, subsequent follow-on from any, any policy? And then any new development would be subject to.
Yes, new development, some, some new development on the, if we were changing some of this residential to industrial, light industrial, heavy industrial and doing big squads of zoning changes that would definitely have impacts on impervious surface, um, you know, the, the natural world, anything like that. There would be an environmental impact statement required, but we're not doing that. There are no zoning changes, there are essentially no changes to what's on the ground in this plan.
And I think the one thing that might affect is if we're basically, we're basically, it's something we did in the nineties. There's probably different information. So the assessment done in the nineties might not have been sufficient by today's standards. So there might actually be some important.
It's, it's residential.
Yeah, also.
Residential development does not require SEPA anyway. So it's like I say, ninety-nine percent of all of this land is residential development. So, um, that's, that hasn't changed. And I, I would argue that the SEPA rules haven't changed since the mid.
Commissioner Passinger?
Well, I mean, I appreciate that answer and it makes some sense. The reason I was confused in this case about that exact question was there were further on statements about environmental impacts that listed things like some animals are likely to be displaced. So, you know, that doesn't seem consistent with this argument.
Yes, but that doesn't make the, um, the SEPA requirements rise to the level of an environmental impact statement. I mean, there are certain thresholds that have to be met before, before that happens. And, and just adopting and repealing and replacing a joint plan doesn't rise to the level.
Well, I'm especially curious about a couple of particular things. I mean, you do, in the supplemental sheet for non-project actions, it does talk, I mean, I guess it's confusing me partly because it does say things like, the first thing it says is policies in the joint plan generally encourage measures to reduce discharge to water and emissions to air by encouraging land use patterns and densities that decrease individual vehicle miles. Construction of modern stormwater facilities, et cetera. Okay, so, I mean, the thing, I mean, it is thinking about cumulative impacts from growth. So why not think about that in terms of, you know, the construction of a known number of anticipated dwelling units or something? You know, I, I guess it's, it's doing it both ways again, you know? It's, it's sort of implying that there will be a reduction in discharge to water and air emissions, even as there's this increase in population, or it's, it's just a bit confusing. And then, um, also in terms of things that have changed since, we know that that south area, um, is, uh, pocket gopher land. Uh, it's, it's pocket gopher friendly soil. It's, um, what is it called? It's, uh.
Prairie.
The best.
Well.
Yeah, but they, you know, they classify it, there's different levels of it, and it's, it's the best. And we have now the Habitat Conservation Plan, you know, that involves the pocket gophers. And it would be good to know what the plan is for how the HCP intersects with the state of the pocket gophers in that south, um, focus areas, we might call it. You know, that's an, that's an example of how things and data, you know, both data and policies, countywide policies and.
That rule, SEPA doesn't have, SEPA doesn't cover the gophers in any way, shape, or form. That's strictly covered by, in, up to this point, individual regulations on each project, project by project. And now that we have the HCP, that will regulate the development in those areas and the mitigation in those areas. So it is handled by a separate process, and that is the Habitat Conservation Plan. So it will work the same in the UGA as it works outside of the UGA. And I am not familiar with the Habitat Conservation Plan. I don't know all of the stuff that's in there, so I can't speak to that.
All right, do we have anybody on the line that has something they'd like to add? Commissioner Halverson, do you have anything?
Yeah, um, I've been listening to this conversation pretty intently and I, I like what Jim, uh, Commissioner Simmons said initially about maybe we're getting wrapped a little around the axle on some of this at this point in time, talking, talking about some of this stuff, uh, that may not have anything to do with the joint plan as it stands right now. I also, uh, agree with Commissioner Nelson that there's stuff in here that, that doesn't pertain to the Thurston County portion of it. It pertains specifically to the city of Olympia. I don't think it has any place in here. I, I guess what I'm thinking is what we need to probably do is make a recommendation, uh, that goes in with this plan, um, that, cause it's gonna be updated again. Uh, it's not, it's been twenty years, but it should be sooner than that, as Leah mentioned. Nothing's going to change in the next few years as it concerns this plan and the UGA. But I think, uh, all the points that have been made are relevant and need to be considered when this is brought forward again, both by the city of Olympia and the Thurston County Planning Commission, whoever those people are. And the recommendation we should be making, uh, to move this thing forward is that when this is reviewed the next time around, the city of Olympia and Thurston County planning staffs, uh, need to consider and bring forward to the planning commissions, both the Olympia Plant Commission and the Thurston Planning Commission, recommendations on that area specifically as Commissioner Wheatley mentioned, that has the septic issue, I believe that's in the Northwest UGA, to take it out of UGA, because the city of Olympia has no intentions of developing that. It is, it's problematic as far as putting septic, uh, excuse me, putting sewer systems in there. So that should be a recommendation that the, the city of Olympia take that out of, recommend, taking that out of the UGA, that we accept that recommendation and take it out of the UGA in the, in the next update. And that we also consider the, uh, the farmland issue, uh, more intently. And possibly even, as Commissioner Wheatley said, a recommendation that each UGA be considered regionally separately as a component of a joint plan, because there are so many differences when you're talking about the Northwest area, uh, the West area, the Northeast area and the Southeast area. There's UGA's all around the city of, uh, the incorporated area of the city of Olympia. So I think maybe it, to move this thing forward at this point in time, it may be more pertinent for the Thurston County Planning Commission to make some recommendations that go into this, uh, plan, um, for the Board of County Commissioners to consider the next time we come around to this, for both planning staffs to do their due diligence into addressing these recommendations, uh, so that they can be considered more thoroughly. I guess that would be a compromise to, to getting this thing moved forward, because it, nothing's really gonna happen in the next few years. In fact, development, uh, and building, et cetera, is gonna come to a real slowdown here in the next four or five years. I don't see much of, much of anything happening in the next four to five years, quite frankly. So I think I would just like to, uh, suggest that we, we move forward with what we have right now with some very pertinent recommendations on what we want to see when this comes forward again. That would be my recommendation.
Leah, could you, could you just thumbnail us real quick? Since you said that this process is not changing any of the UGA boundaries or zoning outside Glenmore Village, what the process would be? And when the timing for that would be for reconsideration of UGA boundaries? Like getting these sewer areas that are hard to sewer out?
Yeah, well, I have never been on the boundary review board, but there is a boundary review board. And, and I, I hear what, um, Mr. Halverson said. And, and I think that it's gonna be self-regulating. When you can't sewer a place, it will, the city's gonna say, we need to get that out of the UGA. I think those things happen as the development occurs out in that area. It's, it's just going to happen. They'll say, we can't incorporate that because we can't sewer it and it will.
So the process will be them saying, we don't want this in our UGA.
Maya, could you please speak to that? I don't know that process very well.
Yeah, so for a UGA amendment that's not initiated by a private party, so a city-initiated UGA amendment or county-initiated UGA amendment, there's usually some underlying data that has been evaluated that suggests that the UGA needs to be revised. And, um, that can be identified through a city comp plan update or through a county comp plan update. Uh, typically the periodic updates are when we look at and reevaluate those. So in the upcoming, um, twenty twenty-five cycle, we'll be looking at that a little bit more in depth and if those boundaries need adjustments. And then if the cities identify that there are areas that, uh, could be removed or expanded or swapped even, they would produce a recommendation to the county to consider that at the next time that the joint plan is updated. And then we would follow a similar process to this, except that following the planning commission's review, there is a additional body that reviews, uh, UGA amendments. That's the UGM Subcommittee through TRPC. And they're comprised of multiple individuals from varying jurisdictions. And then they would also produce a recommendation that then goes to the Board of County Commissioners before final consideration. So i- it's a little bit lengthier of a process, but there's kind of an initial step that happens before we ever get to the joint planning process, uh, that, that kicks that off for a UGA amendment.
All right, thank you very much. Does anybody have anything?
You've got Vice Chair Carlos from the Olympia Planning Commission.
Go ahead, Chair Carlos.
Um, Vice Chair, thank you. I, I just wanted to bring up when you were talking about taking out, uh, parts of, um, areas because they were part of Olympia, not the UGA, uh, like you were talking about Lily Road and, and Cooper Point. Um, having that, I, I like that it is in there because it gives us an idea of, A, where that, where we're talking about, whether it's the Northeast area or, or anything. It also, uh, gives us an idea of, of, um, what areas in Olympia are affecting the UGA. Like somebody who lives out on Cooper Point is very much affected by what happens on Cooper Point Road, including when you get out to Black Lake and things. So, so it keeps us, um, it, it, it's all connected. And so taking out those things kind of removes some of, of planning because we, it, it, it makes it seem like that they're not. And I, I'd like that they're in there and I'm not, it's been a long day, so I apologize if I'm not speaking clearly on it. But, uh, but, but I, I think you can get the idea of what I'm trying to say.
Yes, thank you very much. Commissioner Day.
So I think one thing that could probably help is adding some context as to like, why we're talking about those. And I think you explained it really well, um, that I think could help. So it doesn't feel like it's just kind of in there hanging, cause I think that's the way Scott read it. And then I think.
So you're adding context into the plan about.
Yeah, exactly why some of those, cause I think it makes sense to have them there. I think you explained it really well and I agree with Tracy. Um, so I think something that kind of makes it a little clearer. And then I think the, sort of, I think where, I think Barry was going with this. I mean, we're talking goals, like goals and policies right now. And we've outlined a whole set of like more specific interests than goals and policies. But I think what we really wanna see in that case is that the goals and policies are reflective of the concerns that we've had. And I, I could see something like, you know, in a joint area, like in, in this plan, like we could have a, a goal that we're gonna develop sub-area plans for these in the future. We could have a policy that UGA updates would remove, like specifically remove those, you know, difficult sewer areas. Well, those are self-correcting over time. That adds like a ten, probably fifteen year time lag for them to do that on their own. So, and then we're making bad assumptions about how much space we have in the UGA. So if the, the goal or the policy can be to fix some of those, I think that would probably get us where we need to go.
I like that idea a lot.
Yeah, you too.
Yeah. Scott, how do you feel about that?
Um, yeah, I guess I'd be okay. I, I, I wanna point out that I'm trying to remember, cause it was a long time ago. But I was actually here on the county last year, so. And I believe some of that North County hard to sewer stuff, basically I think everything that was not built out was pulled out. It was pulled out of the UGA at that time. I think the idea was, and I'm pretty sure, but not a hundred percent sure. But I think the idea was that the stuff that was left in was already built out to a point where we felt like at some point, this needs to be served by sewer. And if we take it out of the UGA, it cannot be. So it was, I, that's, that's my memory is that it was left in because the idea was it was already at a high enough density that even though it's hard to sewer, you know, I, well, I guess probably the hope was in ten or fifteen or twenty years, technology has far enough.
Sewer technology.
But maybe we're not there yet. I mean, I don't know, I don't know when the last time anybody looked at it. Maybe it's, I mean, I know from just by geography, it's hard to sewer. But I don't know if there's something new that's made it easier.
Well.
Could, could I recap?
Please do.
The things that I heard specifically? Adding context about how and why the corridors impact UGA, so it makes sense of why they're in there.
I had the same feeling, why we talk about downtown? So just make the connection.
Okay. And then adding goals and accompanying policies for, uh, developing sub-area plans for the different areas of the UGA and removing and adjusting the UGA. So adding goals and policies for those two items. Those are the specifics I heard tonight. I think, yeah, I think another thing was the farmland issue. I think, uh, what I, I think the consensus I sort of heard in the comment that I heard was that just the, the addition of discussion about TDR wasn't really quite getting there on the, on the farmland issue. And that means fleshing out more within goals and policies. Could you, and, and you know.
Wasn't there also an HCP request or?
Wasn't there also an HCP request or concern?
That's a separate document. Yeah, I raised that one. Um, so could you be specific about what you might want to see for goals and policies around agriculture? Uh, well, I think that's something that, I mean, I, I could put some things out. I, I think, you know. Uh. I didn't come this evening prepared to lay out a list of things about agriculture, but I do know uh. You know, that the uh Conservation District did a study looking at the UGA and the city. The city itself is sort of looking at revising its agricultural policies. There's, there's things kind of in the air right now about changing uh. Uh, what qualifies for long-term ag. You know, there's just a, there's, there's so much kind of um. Gestating right now around agriculture policy, both in Olympia and in the county. That it seems prudent to, we spend a little time thinking about how that might be incorporated. There's uh, you know, it's also, you know, it's, it's very much about that southern part because there are changes in land ownership going on. I don't really know. Know that much about all of that, but you know, clearly we have the loss of Spooner Farms. Um, but we have good ag land. That also might be compatible with pocket gopher stuff. You know, there's just, there's a lot of stuff there that. Probably should be teased out in a subarea plan context rather than um. You know, necessarily, I mean, I, I would be happy to, you know, if we could sort of. Add that in as part of that subarea plan recommendation that, that, the agricultural component. So. Because, because it's, I, I do know, I, like, I know that the study that the Conservation District did found that it's about. They did a study of how much farmland is in the UGA and in the city, and it was roughly equal. I think maybe actually a little more farmland within the city. But a greater percentage of the UGA was farmland. So. What you're suggesting is adding a goal at policies to maybe um. Consider and incorporate agricultural studies as they come out. Or no farm, well, I guess consider and incorporate what our county um. Goal, you know, it's part of the county comp plan. I don't know if it's part of the city, but you know, preserving farm, you know, sustainable Thurston. Goals, for example, you know, preserving.
Didn't the public commentator Loretta Seppenin say something about agricultural goal that? If we're gonna use this farmland for residential development, which will be needed, then we have to find other. Farmland that's gonna be saved or restored.
Right. So some kind of policy for what happens as farmland is lost within the.
And I think like this joint plan is the perfect place to talk about something like transfer of the whole rights. Because an effective TDR program is gonna be like county, city, UGA policy to all work in concert.
You think that that's best to incorporate through a, a subarea plan or do you think that's better to do?
I, I don't think you can do it through a subarea plan because it requires, you know. Essentially, you have to artificially like lower the densities below what the market demands so that you can actually, you know, transfer. Development rights from somewhere else to somewhere else. So that. Creating systems like that probably should be a goal of a joint plan. Okay, because it's gonna be, if you have to do that like in this.
No, because we've added um, goal and policy for TDR. So what are you suggesting we do? We did that after one of the October meetings, we added goals and policies for. Yeah, so, but I'm still trying to get what it is that a specific. Specifically what you'd like to see, goals and policies to what, for what specifically? To make sure that um, as farm, as farmland is lost, it's lost to the city, I guess. I mean, I, the way that, that Loretta framed it was as farmland is lost to the city, it's not lost to the county. You know, to find mechanisms to make sure that, that that loss is. Because we're losing, you know, still officially, it's a thousand acres in the county per year of farmland is being lost. And, and you know, so the cities need to step up on that too. I mean, even if the amounts that they're talking about, I mean, there are stuff in, in sustainable Thurston and so forth about. And, and the climate adaptation plan and maybe the mitigation plan, I think, too, about food security. Preserving farmland, you know, that language can be brought in. It, it, it should be brought in um, to the, to. The language around concern about loss of farmland in the, in the UGA. With um, as, as it builds out, it should be part of that. You know, what the, what the, the WAC sort of talks about. I forget the exact wording, but there's supposed to be an orderly plan, right? And, and farm and loss of farmland would be part of that orderly planning. So if we have a goal to assess the loss of farmland as, as it gets developed. Provide me a couple of policies because what we're talking about is a burgeoning population and a, a need to put those people someplace. So I'd like some policy ideas on how to deal with that.
Yeah, sorry, I'm like, Ellen, I think this is, it's essentially a zero-sum problem. Like if you lose. Farmland in the city, you can't go create farmland somewhere else. And most of it's on a protected status. So I, I struggle for opportunities uh to account for the loss of farmland in a city or UGA. I don't know if you've got.
I'm, I'm sorry.
So if we've got farmland in the city of Olympia, it's being developed, it's been planned for, it's essentially like a permit, like. We've, that is the orderly plan is we've decided that this farmland goes away. And I don't know that there's a good opportunity to say, okay, if this farmland goes away, we're gonna try and create farmland somewhere else or protect farmland somewhere else. Those are usually already in a protected status. And I, I struggle with the opportunities to try and like balance it or make up for it somewhere. Unless you're, you know. I mean, most of it, it's, it's already usually zoned in a way that should help protect it. Um, and. I think that's really the only tool we have.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know. I mean, this is something, I mean, I know that the city of Olympia's been exploring how to protect its farmland. I don't know if it's been looking at. The UGA's part of it. I mean, this may be something that requires further discussion. Um. You know, because I, I didn't come tonight with some brilliant, brilliant plan. I'm not a planner. I mean, there, there are a couple of ways to plan and, and, and save farmland. That is stop making baby. One. Oh, the second, now, the second one, most people don't like, and that's increased density. And, and that is, people don't want that, but they want, don't want to lose farmland either. So there's a constant struggle. And creating goals and policies to achieve that is, is a zero-sum game. Well, there are things, I mean, there are things other jurisdictions have explored, like plus, you know, like within the city. Within those unincorporated areas, you can, you can encourage cluster. Uh, development, you know, there are all those tools. Things, the city is really increasing density. There's no question. Well. But the people who live in the UGA and a lot of people, county people in this room resist. In, an increase to density in the UGAs, but that's what we're looking at for the future in the next maybe forty years. Well, oh, okay, but I'm not necessarily resisting increasing density or use of the. I, I'm not saying you are, I'm just saying that. Okay, but you are, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is that this could be discussed further because. I, I don't know much about it specifically, but I do know that the city of, and perhaps others. In the, you know, our friends in the City Planning Commission might be able to help a little bit with this. Because I know the city of Olympia is currently looking at its farm policy. And there may be land use elements to that that I don't know about. That could be incorporated here. And certainly the goal of preservation of farmland or. Uh, food security or, or, you know, something. I, I really am, I guess, hard, having trouble wrapping my head around why that couldn't be included. In the, you know, as part of this goals and policy language. I, I, but I'll just leave it there.
Uh, Commissioner Halverson.
Yeah, I, it, talking about goals and policies on agriculture, I don't know how realistic this is. I'm just gonna throw it out there, but. Couldn't there be a policy or a goal uh that? With expansion or creation of a UGA uh that farmland uh be exempt from being included in a UGA. You know, I know.
It's already in the UGA though, Barry.
Well, in this particular case, it is. I understand. There's so many acres that are already in it. Um, but I think a policy or goal for the county could be that uh. Future development of UGAs, future consideration for UGAs would exclude farmland from being put into a UGA. Um, I, I guess, you know, like I said, I don't know how realistic that could be, uh, but I think it could be a goal or policy that the. The county commissioners consider and that the uh, the other agencies uh that have to work with UGAs. If they understand that that's one of Thurston County's policies or goals, and that's something that's gonna have to be considered before uh. Areas are expanded, uh, UGAs are expanded because it's gonna happen. Uh, outside of two thousand forty-five or whatever. Uh, densities are gonna grow, people, population's gonna grow, uh, additional UGAs are gonna be added. So I think to Commissioner Wheatley's point and to all of our points, quite frankly. Um, and even the city of Olympia's, the protection of agriculture is important. Uh, for, for food, uh, for the citizens that are uh gonna be populating this area. That we protect the existing farmland that's there. And, and not allow it to be uh put into a UGA in the future. I guess that would be my recommendation.
Greg, you had something?
Yeah, I was just gonna comment, um. Trying to find places where this is a, a, a joint plan. And I, I think having kind of some suggestions for as we develop this into the future. Would be great, but this, the agriculture, I think, is a, a good one to talk about, cause. Olympia plans already have a lot of language around infill density. And I think that, that infill density and, and developing denser. Um, neighborhoods where there's already development is one way we can help protect agriculture in Olympia and agriculture in the county outside of Olympia. So. Some language around that or, or some visioning that, that leads the policy, I think, could be um productive over the next five to ten years.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Day.
Um, so I don't, I don't know how. Uh, this, this might be a bridge too far, but um. I also think of like Skagit County, they have a no net loss of farmland policy. Um, that could be something, I would not use that policy because it's had a lot of unintended consequences or maybe perfectly intended. Um, but uh, I would say something like a policy of no, a no net loss of farmland to more intensive uses. Um, that might be a policy that could work. So the main problem being like in the Skagit Valley, uh, farmland is also, you know, a big. Issue for sand recovery. So they struggle to, you know, remove lemons. Uh, so.
So no net loss of farmland to more intensive uses?
Or more dense development, however you want.
Thurston County already has a no net loss of farmland policy.
Well, then it would be a perfect kind of thing to incorporate into a joint plan so that we can see more of the county's interests.
How did we?
Yeah, there's clearly, there's clearly issues with it.
Yeah, cause we talked about that when we were a year and a half ago, we were talking about the Spooner Farm. And the forty acres of farming that was going to disappear from there. How was that going to be mitigated? I don't know. We never heard an answer on that. Yeah.
Well, and that's actually a problem with uh. Other municipal entities aren't bound by the same rules, like a school district report can. That was actually the chief complaint of the Architect of the Grove Act.
I kind of get the feeling that we are not going to get to a recommendation tonight. But what I really would like to do is have clear direction for Leah on what we'd like to see so we can get to a recommendation. And I know that she has a few things already to bring back, to work on and bring back for us. But this would be a great opportunity to task her with anything else that might be really pressing. Doug, you have something?
I'm in line with Barry.
Maybe we do need to take a vote.
Is that candy there? Yes, yes, please.
Thank you. Um, and it's been a great discussion tonight. It was very uh interesting. Listening to your uh dis- discourse and um. I agree with the points that Leo wrote down as far as moving forward. I think in my mind, a UGA is a transitional area that um. Needs to, the city needs to demonstrate how it's gonna serve it. And while. Um, that might be clear in our minds. We do need language, maybe somewhere in the introduction that uh sets the stage, provides the context of why. The city is talking or bringing up policies that may apply or not apply. To the UGA but may apply to only uh neighborhoods within the city. So I like that um. Recommendation. I really like the idea of um future subarea plans for UGAs because of the, the. Very uh different um environments of those areas. And so I thought, I thought that was a good suggestion. Um. And I also believe that um setting up uh the idea of. Changes for future joint plans is a good thing for both commissions to look at. Um, so some language that says we will explore um. Future um changes in how we approach. The planning of UGAs because. I'm getting the idea from everyone who's spoken tonight that what we have in front of us isn't ideal. And so maybe we need a, a better roadmap on how to move forward with something that would work. Both for the city and the county. Again, keeping in mind that UGAs or this plan is a transitional plan. So I hope that um. Is clear as far as what my opinions are. And again, I really thank you and appreciated the discussion tonight.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Kessinger, did you have more?
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Well, uh, I think we're gonna conclude our meeting here, thanks. I don't think we're gonna get anywhere else, but. Last call for anything for Leah to work on before we see her again.
Nothing else, I'm in the same exceptionally good sport.
So we're gonna need to set up another, we haven't set up another joint.
Yeah.
Group session, and so we'll be sending out Google polls to get that taken care of. Probably, if you're maybe, maybe December.
Okay.
You're all agreeable to that?
We. Do what we can. All right, well, with having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Luke.